All right, I am calling the meeting to order at 7:34 PM. And I would like to start off with the, oh, actually, no, hope, yep, we're red. And we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I would move to seal the minutes of the previous non-public meetings until such time as majority of the board's visitors' wives and children can seal them.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Sorry about that. All right, our first item of business is the sprinkler system update. I do not see our construction manager here.
He called me, he told me that the change order has been signed. And that he has signed a contract with any company that's been designing this project. Actually, that hasn't been forward yet.
Okay, excellent. Item B, fire department. A request for participation in Concord Christmas Parade.
Good evening. You should have a copy of the letter that the fire department received from Mr. Blackton. He's a former member of the fire department. He is now on the Christmas parade, per se, for Concord. He called the fire station, he requested, or let me rephrase that, he asked if Tank Four, the newest tanker, could be allowed to attend their parade this year. We reached out to the town, and I clearly explained to him that had to go in front of the board for the board's approval.
And how do you feel about it?
We sent the, that tanker, other parades.
Can I interrupt for one second? My department, we're trying to know if someone can get some holding chairs for putting that back on. And the guys maybe grab a couple chairs and grab the cup up. I don't have many people there.
All right. Because they can't get through the door. Yeah, they'd have to take the long way.
There's quite a few cars I had to park out front.
All right, we're halting for a moment.
All right. For three.
Uh, she stepped out for just a moment. Okay. Back to the place, hey, you didn't, okay. So we just have one more person.
My chair's down. Do you find us?
I don't know if I did. Did, did my, did you? I didn't touch one, I just held my hand over it.
It is, or isn't?
Did you read it?
No.
Then whatever was happening, not anybody heard ya. No difference. Okay, parade. Your feelings, you know that.
We have two volunteers that will take the truck. It's the same as doing other parades. That truck does several Christmas parades, does, uh, bike anniversary parades, et cetera. It's up, it's up to the selectmen. I don't have a problem with the truck, we know the truck will make it there and back. But at the end of the day, it's up to the selectmen.
I'm just curious, because of the distance, you know, most of the parades we've participated in, to my knowledge, and like, Ames, very Kingston, Brentwood, you know, basically our surrounding area.
Very far. We've been over the bridge into Maine when we first got the truck.
You went to Kitterick?
I believe so.
That's still Concord, sixty miles each way.
And you said-
I think he understands if the board says no. He just asked. He reached out, this was, he had, from what he said on the phone, he had his choice of what town and what piece of apparatus he'd like to invite. And Newton was it. Tank Four was it.
Four?
That's the newest one.
Okay. All right, should we make a motion and vote on it?
Well, it's the only way we're voting. It's the only way we're voting.
I'll make the motion to allow the fire department to send a truck to Concord to the Christmas parade on, when was it? Is there a date?
November twenty-third.
November twenty-third.
At nine-thirty.
At nine-thirty.
Is there a second?
Second to the motion.
All right, um, so, small question for you. It will require gas, obviously, to get there, come back, if needed. Is that in your budget?
I don't think I have fuel period. I have to. Looking at the most recent, we have fifteen hundred dollars left in our fuel budget in this fiscal year.
Out of what, for the whole year?
It's the, for the 2019 budget, it was sixty-five hundred.
Okay, so, three quarters of the way through the year, two-thirds, three-quarters of the way through the budget, which are, we're on target as far as your budget, excuse me? Yes?
Yes, but it could change.
True, I mean, we can only work on average.
I can tell ya, standing here, there's a town parade coming up that they do every year. We probably use more fuel during that town parade than what this truck is gonna use to go out there.
Agreed. And I would say the town parade would have precedence over a Concord parade.
I can tell ya, looking at the number, what we spent last year for all, all the apparatus, it's gonna be close. In that parade.
And the vehicle gets how much for mine?
Oh, I honestly, I honestly couldn't tell ya. If you're getting eight, nine gallons, you're doing good.
All right, anyone else have any more questions?
You're comfortable with the volunteers that-
One is, as of right now, one is a CDL driver, one is not. One has taken that truck to Kitterick, one has taken that truck all over the place. Again, it's, I understand, we're getting towards the end of the year. And again, it's the board's decision on that one.
All right. Anybody else have questions? All in favor?
All right, last one is a question. Based on your budget, because I know there's, you know, expenses coming up, of course, it would be ideal if you had to do the parades, not do a new, for Concord's here. I'm still not feeling like it's affordable. Like, is it a-
We're gonna worry about sixty dollars in gas.
So it's gonna be about sixty? Oh, okay.
I'm just throwing that number out there, but we really gonna fail it because of sixty dollars, fifty dollars, or even seventy dollars?
In fuel? Well, that's where, it sounds like where it's going.
Oh, well, that's one, there were a lot of questions asked, I wanted to find out.
I can tell ya, I did not do the calculations for it.
People are asking these questions, and I'm thinking, is it that expensive?
In the past, since I've been here, I can tell ya, we do other things that are into the hundreds.
Oh, okay.
For fuel. Hundreds.
I was just-
No, he's just throwing numbers out there.
Right. Yeah, I, I did not do the calculations on what it would, because I have no idea what that truck gets loaded. It is a heavy truck, so I'd have to guess. If I had to do a guess, you're looking about eight, nine miles a gallon.
Yeah, you're looking at between fifty and sixty dollars.
So you're, what we're looking at is the cost of fuel for, um, not a required trip. We are looking at the tanker being, essentially, out of service while it's on its way to Concord, while it's there for the parade, and while it's coming back, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And how is our other tanker?
We can discuss that as we stand here now. It's good until, I believe it's next, don't pull me on it, I'd have to look at the paperwork. I'd say probably till next spring, next summer, before it's gonna need its repairs.
All right. Again, any more questions? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Nay. I don't mind us participating in parades, but I am aware of expenses that we have coming up.
This is one of the drivers.
So, I, I can't, I don't see it as being a prudent use of our resources at the moment. However, I'm only one, we have three ayes, motion passes.
I will make the notification tomorrow, let them know that the board of selectmen has authorized the truck to go.
Sounds good, thank you. Our next item, Engine Two, Rescue Six, and Tank Five, quote, for repairs.
Evening, again.
That did play a big part in my previous-
Unfortunately, it's like every time I'm here, we're discussing the same thing. The last time I was here was, I believe, for Engine Two again, to get permission to repair. I can tell ya, as we stand here now, there is, we are in, I don't wanna do my paper, we are in the red for vehicle, for apparatus repairs, and I believe for maintenance. I said that when I took office, we have trucks that are just, the costs to maintain and repair are gonna go up and up and up. All the apparatus for the board, and I've said this before, in the spring, they, all the apparatus will have its, the ones with the pumps, have the pump service, then they have the NFPA pump certification. In the summer, they, the apparatus that has hoses and ladders, have the ladders and hoses all tested per NFPA, and in the lovely fall, is a state inspection. All the vehicles passed state inspection, some of them had minor work that needed to be done, except Engine Two. Engine Two failed the state inspection. You have the quote to repair Engine Two, I believe it's around four thousand dollars, four, five thousand dollars.
The appropriate repair Engine Two is eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
And that's everything.
Yeah, that's, that's for the whole thing. But for right now-
Forty-one, sixty-
Right. Correct.
The recommended is six thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars.
It is twofold. Right now, the truck needs about the forty-one, forty-two hundred dollars for the truck to pass inspection. The last time we were in front of the board, we explained to the board that we cut down some non-essential things to be repaired. The other two things that you have for Engine Two is the driver's seat and the on-spot chains. The on-spot chains, for those that do not know, it's the chains that come, you look at some of the apparatus, you can see them hanging down. When it snows, they automatically come down into your snow chains on the truck. Engine Two, when it went for its service in the spring, they found one of them frozen, and that's where that quote is for almost nine hundred dollars. And then the, in that quote, there's another quote to repair the seat. The seat is an air, air adjustable seat, which is broken, it does not work. Okay? Right now, we are looking to get the board to approve the forty-one, forty-two hundred for state inspection. The truck is sitting out of service as we stand here, effective October first, in the Johnson Station, because it has an expired inspection sticker.
What did we spend last year on the inspection?
Last year, I'd have to look Mr. Foot, it passed last year, again, Rescue Six, Tank Five-
No, Engine Two.
And Engine Two, we, they've all had, had minor repairs done to them. This is the biggest, uh, amount for repair for an inspection sticker. I'd have, I didn't bring my glasses, so I apologize, I can find it if you give me a few minutes. I think, I'm not sure if I brought it. I'm not sure if I brought it. Oh, yeah, but it won't show what maintenance from, what it was for sticker for last year.
So the two items to pass this year, new to pass the 2019 state inspection-
Yes, sir.
Are the manifold leaks of forty-one, sixty-eight, and the air brakes and trench shocks at a thousand. So that's fifty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Fifty-one hundred. Not fifty-one, not fifty-one thousand.
Sorry, yeah, fifty, fifty-one hundred, yes. Now, is there anything left in your vehicle maintenance or vehicle budget?
I'm over almost two thousand dollars.
Two thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, I'm over, and that's why we knew ahead of time, that's why I keep on coming in front of the board. And to answer your question, Mr. Foot, last year, a typical inspection sticker is around nine hundred and seven dollars.
So no repairs?
No repairs last year, for her to pass inspection. You did, however-
But no repairs at all?
For the inspection sticker.
No, no repairs at all.
No, you had repairs this year that we had to go in front of the board, that originally was, I believe, seventeen thousand, and we dropped it down to about eight thousand. And that's what the board approved the last time I was here. The seat was in it, there was a whole list- That brought it up to the seventeen thousand, and what we did was, we did just enough for it to pass its pump certification. That, basically, just so the board is aware, that's what we've been doing for the past four and a half years, been putting the bubble gum. And sooner or later, it's letting go, and that's what's happening to Tank Five.
So this truck this year has been costing roughly twenty-two thousand to keep it on the road?
Probably a little more than that.
Definitely.
What we did was, Engine Two, several years back, per NFPA standards, Engine Two had a refurb done to her, which gave it some more years. Okay? It was an excellent refurb they did on the truck, but in total, from, I believe it was eleven, twenty-eleven, twenty-ten to today, roughly about a hundred and, hundred and fifty-two thousand. That's counting its refurb, which gave the town several more years with the truck.
Remind the viewers the age of this truck?
It's a nineteen ninety-one. We are talking, the trucks that are in front of you are the ninety-one, the ninety-four, and I believe the ninety-three, the three oldest trucks. I also, at the beginning of the year, sent to the board of selectmen NFPA nineteen oh one, that basically, it's the standard, the town follows NFPA. Trucks that are twenty years old, trucks that are twenty-five years old, what you should be doing with them. Okay? It's public record, anybody can Google nineteen oh one, it's guidelines, N X D, guidelines for first-line and reserve fire apparatus. I can tell ya, going by the guidelines, some of these trucks should be taken out of service, just because of their age.
Oh, we don't do that to people, we don't do that with trucks, just because they're old, doesn't mean they're-
Which is a hundred percent correct?
Yeah, we have an engine two here, right?
Oh, I-
And you do realize that, and I want the public to realize this as well, that from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen, we have spent already a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in maintenance and repairs on Engine Two. For one vehicle.
Correct. But you have to also understand that the truck was refurbished way back in eleven, or give or take, back, back then, which was able to give the truck some more years. Okay? Unfortunately, I cannot speak for Chief, the retired Chief Ingalls, but I'm sure if he was standing here, he'd be saying the goal, the goal was to get new fire apparatus, not to constantly repair. So, again-
I'm just thinking that the tanker, I mean, we paid what, three hundred thousand for the tanker?
I thought it was a little less than that.
That's my, my point is that in seven years, or six to seven years, we've spent half that just in repairs.
Exactly.
You're gonna need to make a case to the town people.
Exactly.
Frankly, that it's a cause of benefit analysis.
Just so the board is aware- Captain Zalinski and I, and a couple of other members of the department, we've been talking to some manufacturers, to get a price to combine, instead of purchasing one truck at a time, possibly the two oldest trucks, trading in, selling, and getting one truck that can do the job of the two with a ten-year lease. Something, something has to give. Fifty thousand a year is gonna take you ten years to get a piece of apparatus. But we don't have, the alternative is, which we're gonna have to do for next year, even if we put a new fire truck on the warrant for next year, the board still has to make the decision if I have to increase my repair budget by at least twenty thousand dollars. If not, like I said, once time rolls around for Tank Five to have its pump certified, you already have it in writing, its pump's not gonna get certified, so that truck will be out of service. You have it already in writing that come next September, Rescue Six will fail state inspection. So that truck is already gonna be taken out of service. If the board so chooses not to repair Engine Two, well, the truck's out of service now. So you could potentially lose three pieces of fire apparatus. Two for state inspection and one for pump recertification.
Right, now, Rescue Six and Tank Five, those are, just to give us a heads up, but they're not needed expenses until next fiscal year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're talking about-
Correct.
The only thing we have to worry about-
Is Engine Two, right now.
Right now is Engine Two.
Okay, I just, I brought it up just to give everybody a heads up, that Fire Department's budget is gonna go up. If the budget fails, I don't have the money, something's gonna have to give in twenty twenty. That's all. I've always been up front with the board and with everybody, just putting it out there. Okay?
And are you using the same repair place that you've been using this year, or?
Well, Tank Five is always Lakes Region. That's who services, been servicing Tank Five. The state inspections, we have moved them around, we're trying to keep it more local. Now, the smaller apparatus go to a town business for inspection. The larger apparatus are going to a truck company in Brentwood that the Fire Department has used in the past. So they are, it's not like we're using new people, they're the same individuals. The only difference is, what we've done is, on the E ones, we've taken the E ones back to Greenwood, which is E one. And on the Tank Four, which is the Pierce, since it's still new, we're taking that for Minuteman, which is Pierce. So we're taking them back to the certified dealer. We're not taking them for state inspections. We're keeping the state inspections local.
It's not so much the inspection, it's the work that needs to be done that's discovered during inspection. That's the only thing I'm curious about, whether it's Lakes Region, or the more local, or whoever it is, labor rates, things like that, I mean, are we getting the most bang for our buck? What I'm asking.
Unfortunately, I don't wanna say unfortunately, I apologize. There's some, like, some of the stuff in Rescue Six, that's been going on for probably five, six years. Tank Five, been going on for years. Unfortunately, as I stated earlier, been putting the bubble gum. If the board notices, the original, I believe the original maintenance budget for the Fire Department for many years was about ten, twenty thousand dollars. As I stated to Mr. Foot, one inspection is, I believe it's nine hundred and seven dollars. A service is two, three thousand dollars. So with that little budget is, it's impossible.
No, I, I, I agree, it's not a sustainable budget.
And I commend the prior chief, because he had to work within that small budget, I commend him for doing what he, what he was able to do. Unfortunately, we're talking twenty-five, Engine Two, next year, she's on, I know she's a nineteen ninety-one, but you usually get it, you know, the year, a year ahead, you're talking, that truck's almost thirty years old. That truck has served the town very well. Tank Five has served the town very, so has Rescue Six. They have served this town. It, it's just something, again, my job is to bring it forward, to educate the board, is nineteen oh one, feel free to read it, you can Google it, NFPA nineteen oh one, it'll give you everything on fire apparatus, how you test them, certify them, who can work on them, et cetera. And then you have the quotes in front of you.
Well, we're also informing the public by having you inform us. That's the key for what I'm doing here, is making sure everybody understands what it is, you know, we have a lot of tied hands here, your hand is tied, you know?
And again, that's why I commend it, the prior chief, for being able to do what he did. And again, there was the refurbished done on Engine Two, but what he did allowed the truck to be in service for some more years. So, kudos to him and the prior administration.
Agreed. Okay, does anybody else have any more questions?
No, I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion to repair Engine Two at the tune of forty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five, being the last repair for this truck, and come up with a contingency plan to replace it. Fifty-one, sixty-eight.
We also need the air brakes and shocks.
Yeah, that's right, and it was both.
Fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five, sorry.
The other half, Mr. Foot? Is, is the on-spot chains.
Yeah, and that shouldn't be part of this motion, and let's just deal with- Yeah, a- and that shouldn't be part of this motion, and let's just deal with this first.
Why can't it be part of the motion?
You can make a second motion for that, sorry.
Alright, so I'll make the motion.
Just to make it clean.
Fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five.
Does the vote on the press board?
No, no, he hasn't finished it yet.
Fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five, repair Engine Two.
In order to pass the inspection.
In order to pass the inspection.
Alright. Any further questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute.
I just wanted to know, since the chief doesn't have any left in his budget, where-
Where is the money coming from?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Well, then, take it off the low, then, you make that motion.
Now, do you have an idea of where to?
My, my recommendation, the last time I was here, I said the same thing. I would not be taking money out of the capital reserve for fire apparatus. Because the more you take out of that, the harder it is to put back. Okay, as a, if we have another month, I mean, at the end of the year, there might be money left over in my budget. As the board knows, we just spent last month ninety-two and ninety-four man-hours on one incident. If we have another one of those this month, I, I'll bet you wrong. I, I can tell you the, the apparatus, which you know, is taking my maintenance and equip, uh, apparatus budget out. That incident is gonna take my salary budget out. That was the biggest payroll that I can remember. So, to the board.
Looking at your budget, is there any place you, you think at the end of the year, or have anything left over? No?
His budget is under budget to begin with, for all the equipment that has been maintained.
He does have the, um, grant funds, but how is it going with that grant?
He probably not gonna see it. But the game plan was to take that fifteen and incumbent, roll it if we could, right back into next year. Because next year, what we're gonna try to do is do a combined grant with a couple of other communities around here. It seems to be, that's how the grants are going, through the federal government.
Yeah, with the grants, you, you have to have that amount in your budget and care.
Right, we, we can put a grant match of fifteen thousand in next year's budget. We just can't take the fifteen thousand from this year and put it to make it, say, thirty.
Yeah, you can borrow this, if you're not getting a grant this year, right?
Correct, but at the end of the day, I don't have a, I do not have a problem, whatever the board chooses to do. I just do not wanna be standing here come January first, or the, middle of December, and there's zero money left in my budget, and then the board come and visit me. The board, the board is more than welcome. I do not have the jurisdiction under the, under the RSAs to move money around in my budget. Only the Board of Selectmen can do that. I have no problem, if the board wants to take the money out of that item for the grant, that's fine. I do not have a problem with that.
But you're not gonna use it this year in nineteen, she's gonna replace it in twenty.
We still have not received, and I doubt if Nancy received anything, because Nancy's been great. She sends me forwards the email. We have not received any information saying we did not get the grant. I'm standing. My money is we did not get the grant.
We thought you would have heard in two weeks.
Correct.
So we can borrow it and put it back in January first.
Which is fine.
It's our capital.
Okay, what did you say?
Well, there's no borrowing, it would just be reallocating that fifteen thousand to something else. And then, no, and then, when we do the budget for next year, keep the grant line item for the same fifteen thousand for the twenty-twenty, but that's what I'm saying.
Right, right, right.
The end of the fall, because we have voted this year.
Exactly.
Right, okay. Just, just so the board, just so the board, i- if you look at it, oops, sorry. We're ready just in apparatus maintenance, apparatus maintenance, we're over almost twenty-eight hundred dollars, and vehicle repairs were over almost nineteen hundred dollars. So, we, we should be set on vehicle maintenance, because everything is done. If you're gonna take the fifteen, I would take it and put it into vehicle repairs.
Well, i- i- we're not taking-
You're gonna redirect the funds.
I, I, I'm just saying, a- and I'm not even saying we're redirecting the fifteen thousand. I'm just saying, we could redirect the, or pay the fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five out of that line item that has fifteen thousand in it.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, that is what I'm offering as a suggestion.
You can have it so on as your PMR.
Yes, as over budget, but your net line will be the same.
That's what I mean by redirect it, take it out of that, grant match, and move it down if you're willing.
Well, we won't actually move it down, your line item for, um, maintenance will be over that fifty-one hundred, but the bottom line of your department budget would be fine.
You're basically authorizing the fire chief to go over budget on certain lines.
For this fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five, correct.
The, the board, I already voted that the last time I was here.
I'm just curious, uh-
Yes, ma'am.
So, under, you have, under equipment purchase right now, you haven't maxed out, are you anticipating another ninety-eight hundred dollars?
There, there is some equipment that have, has been purchased.
Okay.
Okay, just waiting for invoices to come in.
But there might be wiggle in there?
If we don't get the grant, yes.
So I, I'm just thinking, since he does have the funds in his budget, there is that fifteen thousand for the grant, which we think is likely not happening this year, which means if the, if it doesn't happen, that's fifteen thousand of his budget that he didn't spend. So even if he goes over budget, which is what we're authorizing him to do, is to go over this amount, because we're anticipating the fifteen thousand grant will still be available at the end of the year, and will negate, so that you won't be over on the bottom line. That make sense?
Good.
Everyone follow that?
No, but I disagree. Just say that.
Yep, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's unanimous.
So-
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Matt is abstaining, uh, abstaining.
So what was the total amount, just to get the inspection sticker?
Fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-five.
Just the pass inspection.
Yeah, the manifold, the manifold leaks and the air brakes and foot shocks.
That's fine, we'll call them tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that's it for you.
What about Rescue Six and?
We, we discussed those, those are for twenty-twenty, those were a heads up.
Twenty-twenty, okay.
Those were a heads up.
That's for next year.
Thank you. Alright, our next item is a firearms license renewal for Bradford Lee Dennison.
I'm sure I would move to sign the firearms license renewal for Mr. Dennison.
Alright, we have three lines, so we're gonna have to squeeze our signatures in there.
Last time we got three in that.
Yep. Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions, comments, concerns, all in favor? Aye. Alright, our next item, because that was an easy one, is any other business? I believe we have something for other.
We can talk to the board.
Why don't we all talk?
I wanted to let the board know, we received a direct deposit check in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars from the state, from what they call the municipal aid. Um, and my understanding is that, and we'll send you information, we talked to the auditors today, and we looked up the RSA and all that, and you can use it for unanticipated funds, or you can put it in fund balance, and, you know, maybe do one article off it next year, or you could use it to offset repairs. So, what we were thinking, we have to have a public hearing, um, and we were thinking that maybe we give you guys just a heads up, we'll send you the RSAs and stuff, you might wanna start thinking for the public hearing, what you might wanna do with the money.
Okay, so the public hearing, is that to accept the funds?
Anything over ten thousand, you have to, uh, have a public hearing, and then you get to decide, if the public's here and they want input, um, you can decide where you think this will best be used, or you can make sure that your fund balance, and you can do one article, could use this one next year. So, we were kinda throwing things around, like maybe the mapping, you know, that's gonna be pretty expensive, uh, maybe something to do with DMF four, because we know we have to put money in the budget for that next year. There will be another check too in October of next year, um, approximately the same amount, right?
And we'll have to have another public hearing, because that check is left.
Yes, and that one definitely will be deposited into the general fund. If you wanted to use it, you would have to do it, I think, the following year.
Okay, so, we need to decide, um, since we know we have the checks, we need to decide when we wanna hold a public hearing?
Uh, when the next selectmen's meeting?
Uh, maybe too quick.
I'm not sure if it's seven days posting or fourteen to do the public hearing.
It's seven days.
Seven days, so we could probably, we could get it out right away, we could do it for the next year.
Okay.
My next meeting is October twenty-ninth, that's the-
Uh, we're talking about the regular name, which would be November fifth, yep.
What time?
Um, seven.
How about we do reality? And, uh, do, like, at least seven fifteen.
Oh, that's good, seven fifteen.
Okay, so we can do seven fifteen for the public hearing on November fifth, with this being the only item for the public hearing.
So, am I to understand, anybody could come to a public hearing and just say, I think you should put that money for-
They could give their, their input to the board, and you decide.
We decide, alright.
Yep. So if anyone, um, any of our residents decide that they have an idea of what we should do, that they can certainly let us know, um, it gives us time to consider where we think, um, and we can then discuss it at the public hearing. And we can also just decide to put it in the, um, fund balance, and they get to look to it. So, um-
For a warrant or if we wanted to.
Tim and I were talking about it today, and she, um, offered to send an email to DRA and kind of get their deal of what's the best way of moving unassigned fund balance, and maybe, um, assigned or whatever, what's, what's the best process? We haven't heard back yet, but we're trying to get as much information to you as we can.
And this gives you a couple of weeks to come back with that information for the public hearing?
Yep, perfect. And then in the meantime, we'll put this stuff in an email to tomorrow with the RSA and all that, and what we found out so far.
And the money is deposited, or being-
Uh, it was a direct deposit, so I gave that to the treasurer today, she sees it in the account anyway.
So that means it's collecting interest already, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, as of last week, I believe.
Okay, just checking. I didn't wanna see us holding the check until the public hearing before we could deposit, you know?
That's what's great about direct deposit.
Okay, any other, other business?
Uh, Diane, can we announce our November eleventh thing yet?
Oh, yeah, you're gonna know that, so.
So, um, November eleventh, once again, we're going to hold a complimentary breakfast for our veterans, pancake breakfast, it's gonna be a memorial at ten AM on Monday, November eleventh. So that'll segue right into around, uh, at eleven-eleven, we'll do some sort of a ceremony to honor veterans. So, we're, we're in the process of sending out invites for the veterans, we have addresses on, but obviously, if you're a veteran and you hear this, please mark your calendars, and I think what we're doing was a three-dollar, uh, plus ones.
This was two.
Two dollars, so if a veteran wants to bring a non-veteran, a wife, a husband, whatever, uh, two dollars, you can bring them, or kids, for that matter, if you wanna bring your kids. And, um, we're signing up everybody on this board to volunteer, you know?
I'll be there.
Well, mine is, but-
It's, uh, it'll be a ten o'clock start for the breakfast.
Not for you. Out will be like seven o'clock, you have to cut.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm just-
Okay, um, that sounds like a great event, um-
I think we might still have another point.
So in order to get a head count, people need to come and sign up?
Yeah, that's the key thing.
How do we have a ticket?
Can come and sign up, uh, send an email, um, make a phone call?
We really need to get a ticket.
Yeah, we'll be there, we'll find-
That's the only way we know, and they can do it at the door, whether or not they-
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna waste anything, I mean, I think last year, we might have had one or two walk-ups, but we certainly, we're not gonna turn you away, but we don't want like a hundred people walking up.
Oh, we plan for ten and fifty coming.
Exactly, yeah.
So, so we want them to come to the selectmen's office to get a ticket.
Correct.
There we go.
Can they get it at the door?
They can pay at the door, but we need a head count, so they know how much to buy.
Oh, yeah, trunk or treat is this Saturday, weather permitting, I think weather will be alright. Four-thirty to six-thirty, also at Memorial. Yeah, on the other side of town, at the bank.
At the North Shore Bank.
Yeah, this, this is the right end.
Saturday.
Yeah, this Saturday at the same time, right?
Right, yeah, we booked ours first.
Okay.
Put that in a minute.
So for-
We did actually.
For those who do not have children, and do not want to go and collect candy from the trunk or treat, they can always come and get a ticket to the Historical Society, uh, Fall Festival. Right, an hour each. Okay, so I think that takes care of all of our announcements. Um, we, approval of minutes?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the public and non-public minutes dated October first, two thousand nineteen.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, I move that we adopt the public and non-public minutes dated October eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, Madam Chair, I do not believe at this time there is any reason to unseal any public sealed minutes.
Yep, so nobody sees any region, right? Alright.
Uh, so the manifest? I move to sign vendor manifest dated October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Must be no dispute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I next move to sign payroll manifest, the pay period, September twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, to October twelve, twenty nineteen, with a pay date of October seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, second by Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time looks for Larry. Alright, and did that conclude?
Return.
At eight twenty-two PM. Thank you, everyone.